Hey, call this regular council meeting March 27th, not 26th.
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh. The order. And clerk call the rule.
Cavode?
Here.
Dries?
Here.
Halter?
Here.
Hermes?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Walther?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Okay, and our attorney is stuck in a traffic jam on the interstate. Annie Von's on vacation, and so in her place is our chief, the acting manager. And have a prayer by Maria.
Lord, we ask you to send your spirit of servanthood upon all of us gathered here this evening to do your work for the benefit of all in our community. We ask you to bless our elected and appointed officials so they may deliberate with wisdom and act with courage. Bless the members of our community who come here to speak before council so they state their cause with honesty and humility. Lord, we ask you to bless us all, and please assist and help anybody that is in pain, that is sick, or give comfort to their families for those who have passed. And everything that we do here tonight will move you to welcome us one day into your kingdom as good and faithful servants. We ask this in the name of our brother Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, all right, we have the approval of the minutes for the February 27th regular council meeting and the March 13th work session minutes. Does anybody have any corrections or comments? Okay, hearing none. The minutes are approved. And we have a guest tonight to talk to us and give us an update on the library if she'd like to come up and tell us the exciting things that are happening at our library facility.
Thank you so much for letting me come again. Of course, I'm Jennifer Wykert, and I am employed with the Public Library of Cincinnati in Hamilton County as the branch manager at the Green Hills Library. However, tonight, I am not speaking in that capacity. I am speaking as a private citizen and hoping that you all will give me just a couple of minutes of your time for a cause that's all near and dear to our heart, the public library. Some of you may or may not know that we have a levy that will be on the May 8th ballot, issue three. Just to give a little bit of background for our library system as a whole, and then of course I'll touch on how this will impact Green Hills specifically, but we have almost half a million cardholders across Hamilton County, and almost eighty percent of households have an active card in them. We have forty-one locations. We have a little bit under a million square feet of building in all of those forty-one locations. We have over eight hundred and forty employees, and our circulation last year was nineteen point eight million, and since two thousand, our circulation has gone up sixty percent, and our state funding has gone down twenty-six percent. Yes. Last year, we were the second busiest library in the country behind New York Public. Obviously, well, not obviously, but in my world, the library is very important. We offer homework help and reading programs for children across the entire county. We offer support for small businesses and people who are seeking jobs. We do a lot to help with the economy. And we offer free programs on a wide range of topics for all ages at all of our locations, including Green Hills, where we just had an Icabana program on Saturday, and we had a crafting afternoon for the kiddos who are on spring break today and will be having a Lego building day on Thursday morning. So, all kinds of things, anything from a book club to helping you find a job, we'll be happy to, you know, help you with your information needs. Some of you probably are aware that in two thousand thirteen, we received the National Medal for Museum and Library Service, the nation's top honor for museums and libraries. That was presented to our director and a patron by, the first by Dave Michelle Obama at that point, and we have lots of awards. I could list all of them, but anything from Auditor of the State to this Preservation Association for our Clifton Branch. This is also a graph for, these are Hamilton County, Franklin County, and Cuyahoga County, so Columbus and Cleveland area metro libraries as well. And it just breaks down how much local state funding and how much local funding they get, if you might remember, in the very small category. I mentioned that our circulation had gone up sixty percent, and our state funding has gone down twenty-six percent. It basically means that in twenty years, the library has not had a budget increase. We've been making do busier and busier, more and more formats, trying to meet the challenges. So, we've strived to be fiscally responsible and to remain active in the community and meet the needs of today's patrons and customers as we've grown over the years. However, our funding has not held pace with that. So, we did the levy a few years ago, and now we are actually defining a lot of needs for what we've put off. We've generally had about two million dollars for capital projects per year, and that's everything from, you know, emergency repairs, building, new buildings, and anything in between. And there have been years that we haven't been able to even fund that much. Seven of our branches are a hundred or more years old, and two of them have never been renovated. Three were built in the twenties and thirties, and one of those has never been renovated. And ten were built in the fifties to the seventies, and seven of those have never been renovated. Six of our branches are not handicap accessible fully, some are partially, but we have done a comprehensive study over eighteen months as to the needs of what we've put off, what we've had to make do with because we didn't have the funding for, and we've identified fifty-four million dollars' worth of funding needs. So, we had meetings in all of our communities to try and help define what those needs were, and of course, in Green Hills, we had our little incident with the roof leak. So, that led to a very quick decision to move us from the shopping center to the school building, the community building, where we are still a rental facility. However, we did become ADA accessible with that move, and we did, of course, get some new paint and carpet and such. We are making do with shelving that was already available at the main library. What is part of that fifty-four million dollars is a freestanding branch for the Green Hills community. That has been identified as a need for our community here in Green Hills, and that's part of that fifty-four million dollars is building and furnishing a facility in this community for the Green Hills community. Where, when, those are things that will come later, of course. However, that's just for us here. Other branches on our website is an entire presentation if you're curious about other community ones. However, for us, that would mean a freestanding branch to be built. Our levy that we are going for on May eighth is a one mill to fund operating expenses and capital improvements over ten years. It's less than three dollars a month for one thousand dollars of house value, and it's, you know, library has striven to be very productive, and with this levy, we're going to be able to ensure that all of our forty-one locations are well-maintained and up-to-date. We're going to make sure everybody can get in with ADA accessibility for all. We're going to do all the repairs, replacements, and renovations that we need. We're going to be able to invest in technology and computers for all of the branches that, you know, haven't been upgraded. We're going to be able to continue to offer programs and services throughout the communities and to provide up-to-date collections of relevant materials, both physical and digital. So, the levy would help answer a lot of the issues that we've had lately. So, issue three is on the ballot. It begins, the election is on May eighth. Early voting begins on April tenth, and if you didn't know this, you can come to the library to register to vote. The deadline for that is May ninth, I'm sorry, April ninth for voting in the May eighth election. However, if you also would like to vote by mail so you don't have to stand in the lines or deal with the crowds, we can also help you with that. You just stop in and fill out the request, and we send it down. And that is something that the library has provided for many years. That's not a new service that we just added. That's just one of the many roles that the library plays for the community of Hamilton County. So, I am urging you to support issue three, and if you are interested in the, there is a website where you can offer support. If anybody would like a yard sign, you can sign up and have it delivered to your house. You don't even have to come out and get it. We'll magically let it appear one day. But that is www.votforcincylibrary.com. W-W-W dot V-O-T-E-F-O-R-C-I-N-C-Y-L-I-B-R-A-R-Y dot C-O-M. So, I really appreciate your letting me speak to you for just a few minutes about the needs of the library and what we're hoping will happen on May eighth.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of things to address. Number one, I wanted to commend you for the idea that you have of helping the citizens when the weather was inclement, for them to be able to pick up or deliver the books, and your assistance through the curve, so to speak, to do that. That was ingenious, and I have heard over and over how helpful that was. Second, what was my question was about the signs. Would you be having any signs housed in the library for people that may want to stop by, or do we have, we have to require to, you know?
There's a separation for the public library as an entity that serves the entire county, and what we're allowed to provide in the way of supporting any issue or candidate. So, the library cannot have signs or anything there.
Cannot. So, I have to be directly then online to subject.
But if you go today, or if you come talk to me on my lunch break, I'll be more than happy to see what I can help you out. So, we do have all the computers that anybody would need to access that if you don't have anything from home as well. We would be more than happy to assist with getting customers online, which is one of the services the library provides.
From what I'm sitting here is a no-brainer, the need for the library, the fastest levy, there's, it's a no-brainer. As you explained, the three dollars per hundred thousand, it speaks for itself. So, thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you so much for your time. Any other question?
I actually had one question. The whole state funding, it seems like the state should be sensitive to how important the library is. Is there any, you know, progress as far as getting more funding from the state as well as the levy?
Well, we certainly do have, our administration works to advocate for how important the role of the library is throughout, and I know that a number of library systems do advocate for themselves to all of our state representatives. There's a legislative day that we always take information to our representatives and senators and ask them to consider how important the library is, most definitely.
I wonder if it would be worth it for us to put a vote in, you know?
Resolution.
A resolution.
A resolution for that, yeah.
Shows the need and at least puts our voice forward in that areas, because I think they should be supporting the library money more than they are right now, but.
The governor would probably suggest taking it out of our money to.
Yeah.
I can relate how their funding's been cut.
It doesn't hurt for us to at least ask, I think.
But I agree.
Maybe we ought to work on that at the work session.
Okay.
I will say that if you are interested as the village council to work on an endorsement, if that's something that you all are, you know, allowed to do, thecincylby.com would be more than happy to add you to our list of organizations and groups that are endorsing the issue three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything?
Oh, I've been a lifelong library goer and user, so I appreciate all that the library does.
Thank you. We know that Green Hills is a very strong supporter of the library and has been for a very long time. I was at the Green Hills Historical Society last night and privileged to sit in the room where we first started providing library services in nineteen thirty-eight, and we're very glad to be back in that same building, even if we're just down the hall. And I don't know if I've mentioned, but our local history collection of bound journals and everything have returned from Forest Park, so they're available for anyone who's interested in the community for doing research. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would love to see a stand-alone library in town.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Moving on, it's, this is time for citizens to comment on matters before council. When recognized, please come forward to the lectern and give your name and address and state your comments or questions. This is not intended to be a dialogue with council or village staff. If you have questions, the questions will be recorded and referred to the manager's office for a response. This will allow time for thoughtful and thorough consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to three minutes.
Hello. My name's Monique Mason-Halter. I live at one five four June Field. I'm here tonight to talk about how village residents are being affected by increased costs, like the new garbage collection fee of eleven ninety-seven each month. This is a big deal for many residents here, especially the large population of seniors. Increased costs like this were strongly opposed already in two thousand sixteen before the school levy passed. Many residents posted signs in their yards. They were well-researched and thoughtful letters published in the journal about how this would hurt residents. Regardless, it passed. Now, we also have the monthly garbage collection fee, and as of two weeks ago, the council started discussing a new tax levy to provide raises for our police. My husband and I support the police and think they deserve fair wages and good training. But I am asking you to find another way to do this other than raising taxes and adding more fees that will hurt residents. My husband and I moved here in two thousand sixteen. I have talked to many longtime residents who are unhappy about decisions made by council in regard to cost increases, demolition of historic property, and more. Some have been moved to tears when talking about this. I've been told that it's foolish and useless for me to ask you to consider how these increased costs are hurting residents. I've been called naive and misguided. I've been told council doesn't care about hurting residents. I am still asking you to find another way to give raises to police officers other than placing additional taxes and fees on residents. I am still asking you to remove the monthly garbage collection fee. It is on public record that council recently approved paying a hundred, approximately a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to demolish historic residential property without attempting to sell it first. There are different opinions about whether or not that property could have been renovated instead. Opinions are not the point. The point is that council decided to pay for it without considering other options. It's also on record, there was an offer to buy the property for ten thousand, and the council turned it down. All this money could have been used for something else, like giving the police officer raises and garbage collection. It is my understanding, this is not the first time the council has chosen to do something like this. It is my understanding council is considering demolishing more property as well. I hear stories about how Green Hills used to be a community that valued the well-being of its residents, but now our taxes are among the highest in the county while most of the residents are not the wealthiest. Your neighbors are now caught between a rock and a hard place. We are hurt by the increased costs. Those who would like to move can't afford to sell their homes because the high taxes are a deterrent to people looking to buy in this part of town. Whether the founders of Green Hills subscribe to the Bible or not, this community seemed to be founded in the spirit of love thy neighbor.
Time is up.
Bob?
Yes, I'd like to give a reminder again, please.
Thank you. Whether the founders of Green Hills subscribed to the Bible or not, this community seemed to be founded in the spirit of love thy neighbor. Your neighbors have not been feeling that love for a while now. For these reasons, I am asking you to abandon your motion for a new tax levy. I am asking you to not pay for more demolition. I am asking you to remove the garbage collection fee, and I am asking you to find other ways to pay for raises and future projects other than new fees and taxes for residents. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Patty Ingraham, and I live in the fragment that's left of the historic district on Chalmers Lane. Over the years, it looks to me, from what I can gather, that you've torn down eighty garages in five different locations and seven different sites. I believe it's eighty-seven individual homes that have been demolished. I really think you should probably take the proclamation for the national historic landmark from the county off the ball because you've disgraced it so severely. I will say, I totally support what the lady from the library said, and I've asked her to place a sign in my yard. I agree with Monique regarding the water billing and that that was just a very aggressive and unsympathetic or understanding move that you took to actually lay more unvoted tax on the shoulders of the village residents. That's eleven dollars and ninety-seven cents could have clearly been covered by virtue of the money that you blew on demolitions. You decided to thumb your nose at the entire country when it comes to these demolitions, and you will pay the price for it. I am encouraged to tell you that I have over sixty applications for readjustments on the Board of Revision for property values in Green Hills, and by virtue of many of these reassessments, I believe that there certainly would be no need whatsoever for you to be considering any kind of any tax levy of two point mil, two point five mil. You indicated that that would generate about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and in reality, you foolishly spent a hundred and sixty thousand on this demolition. Right now, my entire neighborhood is nothing but mud, mud that blows and coats my car with dust and debris. So, when is it that you're going to plant any grass over there? When is it that you're going to be repairing the sidewalks? When is it that you're going to be doing anything that is productive in this community that involves the citizens, that involves the planning commissions, that involves the rule of law? It's so unfortunate that residents have to go to court and file injunctions to stop you from your foolish behavior. You have burned through eight point five million dollars on your monopoly game all the time, voting canceling of bonds over and over and over without asking the citizens for any input whatsoever. This is just utterly mind-blowing to anyone across the country that has even a clue. No one can seem to figure out what you're up to. It's going to be a big surprise, and it may end up being something they're surprised with.
Anybody else? Okay, moving on.
First off, I want to say also, welcome back to Kathy Lives. We've really, 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 really missed you.
Thank you.
Okay, acting municipal manager, Chief Furman.
Thanks, Mayor. There's a couple of things that are happening that are a good sign that spring is coming. The Green Hills Spring Cleanup Leaf Collection will be starting soon. The Services Department will be collecting leaves between April ninth and the thirteenth, and each Green Hill Street will get at least one passed by the leaf truck. For residents to ensure that their leaves are collected, please have them raked into piles along the right-of-way prior to April ninth. We'd ask that residents avoid raking leaves into the street gutters where they can clog the storm drains or behind parked cars where the leaf truck cannot reach. After April thirteenth, you can bag your leaves for collection by Rumpke on the regular collection day. We're very excited to announce that we have been recognized for the thirty-third year as Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation. Tree City USA designation signifies a commitment to effective urban forest management. In order to qualify, we have to meet four requirements: a tree board, a tree care ordinance, an annual forestry budget of at least two dollars per capita, and an Arbor Day observation and proclamation. And speaking of Arbor Day coming up, the Village of Green Hills is celebrating its eightieth anniversary this year, and the traditional gift for an eightieth anniversary is oak, so it seemed fitting to celebrate by planting eighty oak trees throughout our community. We're inviting residents and friends of Green Hills to donate to the planting of these eighty oak trees. A donation of one hundred dollars will result in the village planting an oak tree and adding the donor's name to a time capsule, along with a photo of the tree that was planted thanks to the donation. If you do purchase a municipal memorial tree through our Memorial Tree Program, your name, as well as the name of the person you wish to honor, will be placed in the time capsule. And kicking it right back to Arbor Day, the eighty oak plantings will kick off on Arbor Day, which is coming up on April the twenty-seventh. We hope that all will join us next door at the Marquard House to witness the first oak being planted. And then finally, there is a program we're planning to undertake along with our partners up in Forest Park, and we're going to be calling it the Blue Dot Buddy Program. It's going to be a collaborative initiative designed to identify and locate the members of the elderly community that do not have any known internal support system, who are located within the Green Hills and Forest Park areas. The two main objectives are to make sure that basic life needs are being met and to establish an informal support network by cross-matching local members of the elderly community who are alone in a similar situation. And the Green Hills Police Department will be working with the Forest Park Police Department to kick this program off, and we're really looking forward to that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any comments of the manager?
Well, I had a couple of people here, the residents from Green Hills, that they were wondering if at any time there was any consideration to have plaques at the entrance and the exit of the, of the village for the, with the sign of being historical naming of it, like they have in Glendale, and I just told them that I was going to bring it to the city manager, the village manager, and to the mayor, because I didn't know exactly how to go about that or if it's such a thing being thought about.
We've talked about that. We haven't decided what yet.
And they mentioned that the signs that we have saying in Green Hills at the entrance of the, of the village and the exit, you know, that they were hoping that there would be some kind of a metal signage, and they mentioned that one about Pioneer Park, something like we have there to welcome people in and out, say, you know. I told them that I was going to bring it up, and they said they had lived in the village for a long time, and they wanted to see something like that, so.
And that metal sign, though, was pretty expensive, and of course, we got that with a grant provided by the state.
Well, they were just kind of disappointed with just the rock. That's what, that's what it came about.
Oh, 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 yeah, well, no.
That no one can see it coming and going while the other villages have something that you can see from the car as you're coming and exiting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's something that could be possibly added to our entrance signs, you know, as you come into the village.
Okay. And our law director evidently is still stuck in traffic, and I told him if he couldn't make it here by seven thirty, just to forget it. Clerk of Council, Kathy Lives, back with us after.
Yay! It's so good to be back. It truly is. With respect to the law director's report, he did provide a legislative update. Would it be your intention that I include that in the minutes?
Sure.
I'm not sure that he sent it to all of you.
If you could forward it to us, that'd be fantastic.
I will do that, and then I'll leave it in the minutes because I'm quite certain that's why he sent it. So, I'll get that out to you. And the only thing that I have is that the March two thousand eighteen community calendar, I know it's number two thousand eighteen, and I don't have the number here, it is one, and resolutions, two thousand eighteen oh six F and seven oh seven Streets and Services were posted as required. And if there are no questions, that would conclude my report, and thank you for your kind of welcome back. It's great to be back.
Good to have you back. Okay, Chief of Police, you're Furman.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. On a slightly different topic, we, we are very pleased with the results of two search warrants that were executed recently in conjunction with the Drug Abuse Reduction Task Force. Those resulted in a number of arrests at two locations in our community, one in the F section and one in the G section. And as a result of that, we had a number of felony and other serious drug charges made against some individuals that were involved in both the use and, more importantly to us, the sale of illegal narcotics. We are continuing those efforts, and we don't intend to let up on that at all. We intend to send the message that those that peddle illegal narcotics. We intend to send the message that those that peddle illegal substances in our city or our community will be either arrested and relocated out of our community, hopefully to a prison. We are very pleased that one of our officers, Michael Willis, was honored, or will be honored very shortly, by the Mothers Against Drunk Driving in conjunction with their Awards of Excellence recognition event, and that will be this Thursday. And the mayor will be attending, along with Lieutenant Ward and I, to represent our community. Officer Willis was responsible for nine of the seventeen OVI arrests in the past year, and has been recognized as an officer who has distinguished himself above the rest and set the example for the performance of his duties to stop impaired driving. So, we're very pleased that he will be honored. We recently participated, along with the mayor, on delivering meals on wheels. It was a really interesting morning, and we got to personally deliver some meals to two of our residents in the community. They were a little surprised to see uniformed police officers standing there. We had, as soon as we announced Meals on Wheels, it turned from anxiety to smiles. We were very happy to be welcomed into those homes and see those smiles. We were recently awarded, from the state of Ohio, another bike helmet grant. Last year, we were awarded thirty-six bike helmets, and we gave out all thirty-six of them. And this year, we were awarded fifty-six, and we plan to work throughout community events such as Pioneer Days, the Harvest Fest, and other community activities where we will be giving those out to children in our communities. And if anyone is watching that has that need coming up for spring, please give us a call at eight-two-five-two-one-zero-one, and we'll be glad to set you right up. We're also pleased that the Board of Directors of the Regional Crime Information Center has granted us permission for another RCIC terminal, which will be placed in our booking room. Currently, we only have one terminal. We need that information a lot of times during the booking of prisoners. We have to shuttle back and forth between rooms, so this will increase our efficiency, enhance officer safety. The only cost to us will be for the hookup. We already have a computer that is compatible that's already in the booking room, so it will be a very low-cost installation, and we're very pleased to have that being installed shortly. Speaking of money, our collections are rolling in. Our Police Clerk, Vanna Sequoy, has been working diligently in collections efforts. We have changed our collection service to the Ohio Attorney General's Office. The kind of neat thing about that is that any lottery winnings of persons or income tax refunds first come to those that are in line in the collection service. So, we've had a few unhappy people that said, "You took my income tax refund," but we've been waiting on our, our mayor's court fines to be in, so we're pleased to get that. And since February first, we've taken in fifteen thousand two hundred and five dollars in fines and collections for deposit into the general fund. We wanted to let everyone know that there's a change coming very soon in Ohio driver's license procedures. That will be effective July second. We're all very used to going to the License Bureau, having our pictures taken, getting our eye test, and coming out with a new license. That won't be the case after July second. They will be giving you a temporary paper that will allow you to drive until your license is mailed to you. Ohio is joining forty-one other states, and the federal legislation was designed to cut down on driver's license fraud, and this will allow for the production of driver's licenses that can't be so easily duplicated as they currently are now. As you all know, the bombings in Austin were in the news nationally, and we've received a few calls about people concerned about packages. We did put some information on both our website and in our monthly report about what to look at for package safety, and we share that with our municipal offices. And if anyone wants a copy of that, all they need to do is contact us. Pardon me. During the past month, we did investigate three accidents. That's down from thirteen the same time last year. Three crimes, same as last year. One hundred and twenty-six other incidents. We had a total of five hundred and thirteen contacts. Two hundred and twenty-eight of those were dispatched or received by telephone, and two hundred and eighty-five were self-initiated by our officers. We provided assistance to the public in one hundred and ten instances. We assisted other agencies around us sixteen times. We made twenty-six criminal arrests and sixty-five traffic arrests. And that will conclude my report. Mr. Mayor.
Comments or questions?
I want to thank the chief for taking my phone call the other day. I was thinking about the first of April, Easter Sunday, our egg hunt, and I mentioned to him with the increase in, in problems with drugs, drug users and drugs and so forth, to scam around the commons area to make sure that no child would be unsuspectingly stepping on or, or touching a needle or anything like that. And he very, very nicely said that, "Don't worry, we'll, we'll take care of it." And so, I really thank you for that. And then, second, on the driver's license situation, if I'm correct, there is going to be two separate ones of choices of issuing it. And one of them is the one that is just for driving, but the other one is, the other one that has the particular ID in case you are going to be on a plane or something like that. Are there different prices on those two?
I don't know the answer to that right offhand, but I'll find out and let you know.
Because they, there were two, yeah, there were two different ones offered, and one is just merely for driving in Ohio, and driving through states or whatever. But that one, particular one, will not allow you to board a plane. So, there was another one that was advertised that were going to have two different pictures, one color and one black and white, and then with that particular one, you would be able to board planes.
We'll find out.
Okay. They didn't say the difference in price or anything. That was all the article said.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I have the Municipal Court for the month of February. The county received forty-two dollars. The state of Ohio, twelve hundred and seventy, twelve hundred dollars and seventy cents. The Village of Green Hills, five thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty-eight cents for a grand total of six thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars and eight cents. And that's, that's February's court receipts. And I wanted to make another comment, but some of the people that got up and made their comments have already left. But, you know, the, the problems the village has financially running are not any different than what the library is facing, and the county is now talking about increasing the sales tax. The state has done very well in balancing their budgets of our backs, the county's backs, the library's back. And, you know, and some citizens don't realize that. And you can only cut so many things. And the real cost of doing business here is employees primarily. And, and we need to keep up with what employees around the area are being paid in order to maintain employees. And so, you know, we take these things very seriously, and when taxes are increased, it affects us too, because we all live here. And, you know, we don't like to pay more taxes than we have to, but, you know, we do. So, and there, when we did the garbage, made the decision on billing for garbage, that was discussed numerous times in council meetings, starting three years ago, maybe more than that, before a decision was made. So, some people evidently miss those discussions, miss the articles in the journal and that sort of thing. So, anyway, that's my two cents worth for now. Moving on, committee reports, Finance and Audit, Mr. Dries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a committee report, but I do have two cents also.
Oh, okay.
And I appreciate people when they come and talk, because it gives us a chance to hear their opinions. And it also gives us a chance to respond, and I don't wanna say, "Set the record straight," 'cause I think that's too strong a language, but I, I do feel it's important to, to share just a couple of thoughts that I had as Monique was, was speaking. And like I said, I'm glad that she came to speak, because quite frankly, sometimes it's a little frustrating. We don't hear community input from a wide variety of people. Dave already mentioned it, one of the things I wrote down, is we're all residents too. My, I live in this village with my family. My, I'm a neighbor to people that live in this village. And so, whatever we decide in the best, what's the best interest of the community, it affects all of us also. And I would say that, I know these people pretty well, and if you email any of us, we're pretty quick to respond with a, a comment. I've had coffee with many, many residents, and I, I welcome your input. I don't think that there's anybody sitting up here that thinks that we have all the answers. And quite frankly, if there's another way that we can do something fiscally that is advantageous for the long-term health of the community, we're certainly welcome, we would certainly welcome those ideas. I am very, one of the things that I've always said about being on council is, is I, I hope that this is a great place where if you're a young person that has just graduated from high school or college, you can find a place to live here. If you're a young family, if you're a young single, if you're an aging family member person, or you're a retiree, I want this to, I think it's very good to have a community that's diverse in age, as well as other ways. And the comment was made tonight about older people, and I'm, I believe that that meant retirees. And I just wanna share this with folks. Our general fund budget is about two million dollars, give or take. It's pretty close to that. And a little more than a million of it comes from income tax. So, the burden that falls on those of us that are in our working years is pretty substantial compared to retirees. And this is really a pretty good place, if you're a retiree, to work, to live, given those dynamics. There was a comment made about the, the properties that were torn down. We had an outside person several years ago look at it. This contractor said essentially they're functionally obsolete, and the cost to renovate those would be prohibitive as far as what you could get back in rents. And so, we had a decision to make. Do we sell them for a very low price to somebody else that's not gonna put the money into it, because it doesn't make sense fiscally, or, and just rent them out? Or can we improve the housing stock here through redevelopment? We chose redevelopment. And reasonable people could disagree about that, but that was the choice that we made. But I don't want people to think that it was arbitrarily done, and there was no thought given to it, because there was thought given to it, and an outside person who had expertise in renovation did look at it for us. As to the police levy, I, I've been trying to figure a way to pay our police better for a while, and we've made some small steps. But quite frankly, we can't move the needle enough with these small steps. We did a survey of the starting pay of police officers in Hamilton County, and in that survey, there were thirty-four departments that we got information from. And our police starting pay is twenty-nine out of thirty-four. So, we're at the very bottom as far as starting pay, and it doesn't get any better when you look at top pay of police officers. And I'm gonna speak just for myself, but I think that the number-one job of local government is to provide for public safety. So, I would view that as police, fire, and EMS. And we have a fantastic chief, we have a fantastic department that's Calea accredited. And if we're gonna keep that up and keep this a very safe community, which it's always been ranked one of the safest communities, we have to improve the pay. And we can't ask the chief to do his job and his leadership team do their job if they're always interviewing people and training new officers and training them to go work somewhere else in our, in our county. And so, we have to improve their pay. And then, the last point that I wanna touch on was, Ms. Andwan is a frequent visitor here and, and a critic of paying for high taxes. Well, I went and looked at her property taxes, and she pays eighty-three dollars and twenty-six every six months, eighty-three dollars and twenty-six cents every six months for the village portion of her property taxes, which is about forty-five point six cents per day. And if somebody came to me and said, "You can live in Green Hills and pay forty-five point six cents per day for a Calea accredited police department, a volunteer fire department that is well-trained and well-equipped, EMS, streets plowed, streets paved, streets lined or striped, leak pickup, a service department that works very hard and does a great job, parks, a golf course, a swimming pool," I'd say that it's a bargain. And I don't wanna sound unsympathetic to people that are really struggling financially, but forty-five point six cents per day is not a heavy burden. So, those are just a couple of thoughts off the top of my head, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. Moving on, in our Governmental Affairs, Laws and Rules, Jack Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I second Mr. Dries' thoughts and concerns. The Council Committee on Governmental Affairs, Laws and Rules, met yesterday morning. Discussed any updates on the license, a license agreement concerning shopping center signage. That's still hanging in the air. Any update on the golf course, private golf cart authorization and release is in, in the works. We got an update from both Chief and Dave, Dave Lomson, on surrounding communities' position on the American, medical marijuana issue, which will be coming before council here in, in due time. And the chief also gave us an update concerning abandoned cars. I think if you haven't noticed, that the Mercedes-Benz that was on its, on its frame at Farragut is, has been, been removed, and we're looking at other situations within the village. So, we're, we're happy to, to take that, that increased stance. So, other than that, Mr. Mayor, that's the bounce of my report.
Comments or questions? I understand some people have had trouble walking down Farragut now that that car's not, got the locks.
They continue to walk up.
Okay. Community Development, Jeff Holber.
Yes, no report, but two cents to add as well. But before I say that, we do have on April fifth, a community development meeting at five-fifteen, for those that desire to attend. I too, I'm not sure how to express my feelings about what's communicated in such a broad and generalized manner. I think it saddens me, because I got on Village Council because my kids have grown, and the whole desire is to try to help the community, if I was able to do that. And so much of what I, so much of what I've learned through my professional career, education or what have you, has to come down with context. And we live in a society where it's really simple to read a blog, or read an email, or a note, and draw a conclusion. I wish it was that easy. So, without knowing the context, things like the inheritance tax that was taken away from us by the state, which was hundreds of thousands of dollars, puts us in a very difficult situation from a finance point of view. The amount of increased crime, you know, one thing that wasn't mentioned is the, this drug epidemic is not a joke. It is a very legitimate thing that plays out with many, many, many more calls, much more demand, you know. So, I have no qualms whatsoever supporting our police department, and what we are talking about is a levy. If you feel you cannot, if you don't agree- you feel you cannot, if you don't agree with that, you, you have the right to vote differently if you're not a supporter of that. I highly recommend that we do support the levy from the standpoint of increased crime. We have a quality, quality police force. And it's just, I mean, how, how to answer that? It would really take a long time to put the whole context around. We have nothing, and maybe I should speak for myself only, but I see no advantages. Like, this is not an ego trip where I get to decide other people's fate. I take it, you know, I take it very, very seriously. I try to think of a whole range of people that aren't here vocalizing their opinion, as well as those that do vocalize their opinion. So I think it would be beneficial, but it takes a tremendous amount of effort on everybody's part to understand the context behind decisions, to attend meetings, to, you know, to dig into it beyond the surface before you draw your conclusions. That's all I've got to say.
All right, services and streets, Jeff Cabot.
No, we're nothing to report at this time unless you want me to.
You can give us the bad news.
The bad news. So as most of the council members know, I officially turned in my resignation today, effective Thursday, as I am closing on the House Friday. Hasn't really hit home yet that after 40-something years of either living or owning property in this great town that I'm going to be moving away. So it's with a heavy heart that I turn this in, and I wish everyone on council and community members all the best of luck moving forward. So that's it.
And as much as you've loved this town, you've found a greater love.
I guess.
Come on.
So I'll still be around, still planning on coming up on Thursday nights for golf, so you'll see me around town.
Jeff, I just want to publicly thank you. You've made this council better, and I appreciate the rich heritage that you brought. I never worked all the jobs in this village that you did, and so I appreciate everything that you've contributed in the years that you've served.
Thank you.
And, and as, as your second cook at, at the community days, you know, you, you were the champion hamburger turner. I only did hot dogs, so you know, it, it, I always felt that I was, you know, looking over your shoulder.
My sous chef.
I hope that I can call on you for the expertise on those.
Sure.
And we have our community days at the pool, but in all seriousness, you have backed me 100%. Without your backing, I would have not had the Harvest Fest that it was retired to be, and we brought it back. And I always felt that you, you really had my back. So I really want to thank you for that. And like I said, there's going to be a grill waiting for you. There will be two dates.
Cell phone numbers are same, just text, just call me.
And they will be up on the paper, advertise the different events of the community, and the two of the pool would be there. So I appreciated all your, your help, and I really appreciate you backing me 100% like you have.
And, and we just, just to provide a little bit of comfort, I taught him how to turn on that grill, so.
Well.
Special instructions, only Jack and I know.
Well, then, you know, hey, I plead ignorance on that. But I know, and I also thank you because you have come here many of the times to, to help us with that. And I think there were, the count was 250 hamburgers and 250 hot dogs and, you know, miscellaneous other jobs that we have done. So I really appreciate that.
Yeah, we're going to miss Jeff. I was hoping for a long career here on council for him, but he's paid all of his dues in town and deserves moving on. I know you can't get a person from Kentucky to ever move to Ohio. It would have been nice. Okay, thanks again, Jeff. Moving on, safety, Melanie Hermes.
Our next meeting is April 24th at 5:15 here. I also will put in a little bit of my two cents. It's a little bit disappointing when someone wants to have a conversation and discussion about it and then doesn't stick around. But one of the things I do want to point out that both, well, everyone on council has already mentioned, the levy is a good opportunity. That's where you can come out and you can vote for something. One of the things you hear bandied about is non-voted versus voted debt. A levy is a chance for the residents to vote. And a couple of the items that were brought up are one-time fees. You talk about the cost of this, the cost of that, and it was something that was a one-time cost, whereas levies generate money annually, so it's a continual thing. So there's a difference between, I don't want to say you can't, it's pinching a penny and for something that's going to cost a dollar in the long run. You have to look at the big picture and learn about the finances and realize that, yes, it impacts our wallets and our lives, and we do take everything with thought and consideration before we do vote on these items. And we do have them in open discussion. So please come in, come talk to us, send us emails, talk to the manager, talk to the mayor, talk to the police chief. One of the things, and I don't want it to be generalized, is we're trying to pass a levy just for raises. It's much more than that. It's not just the salary. Yes, that's the biggest part of our budget, but that's not the only thing, and that's the thing that's getting stuck. That's the thing that's sticking in people's minds, and you need to look at the big picture and not just one little glimpse of it, and not just one person's bias to look at it that gets repeated, reiterated, and tossed around. You need to come talk to more than one person, get more than one filter. So that's my two cents.
Okay, thanks. All right. And actually, I make house calls. If people have questions, I'll come by and talk, answer their question.
There's also the hidden cost of train, training police officers for other communities.
Absolutely.
That is lost, lost money.
And Jeff mentioned about the demands that have increased tremendously. The risks have increased exponentially greater than the demands on their lives with the drug crisis that we have, the drug epidemic. So I, that's one of the reasons why I brought to the chief, you know, Easter egg hunt, let's clean the commons, let's make sure that there are no needles there for the little ones. So this has become a crisis now that not just certain areas of Hamilton County has as a curse, but everybody is going to have a problem with it, or has happened, has been having one. So I appreciate everything that the chief and, and the police department does for our village, and always, always present when called. So I really appreciate that.
Okay, and you're up next, Recreation Cable TV.
Yes, I attended the meeting on March the 14th at the Community Programming Board, Regional Council of Governments, and there was the Finance Committee report by Mrs. Hermes. There was other committee reports. They were talking about new business, a program of the minutes and so forth, and a resolution adjusting the budget. There was a problem that they had to readjust the budget for 2018. They did that. Our next meeting for Waycross is June the 13th. Oh, they have a summer program for the community for students. There's two different programs, one for junior high and one for the regular high school. And they have, they trained the students that are interested in filming, into presenting for the community, et cetera, and they have classes for that. They have a application procedure. It is on the website, and they will be happy to answer any of your questions. Also, I am going to have to say that until I get a new partner, I have to cancel temporarily the Recreation Committee meeting that I have. And we have get-togethers by different areas where we're trying to get together for the Harvest Fest. Right now, we are zeroing in on the music for the festival. We have, we can, we can do that without a committee meeting because that's all, it doesn't have anything to vote or, or to bring to council on that. So we are at that stage just right now, and we are moving right along. We are hoping that we're maybe bigger and better than it was before.
When were you planning on having that meeting if you didn't have to cancel it, the committee?
That was going to be on the, on the Thursday, was it the, the second, second Wednesday of the month?
April, yeah.
In April, yeah. It was together with the Recreation Commission. Both of them were together.
11th.
The 11th, yeah. So we're going to reschedule that at some point when we know who we would have, you know, if we're going to change partners on the co-chairs or whatever situation arises. So I will be able to notify you of that.
Okay, great. And before we jump into unfinished business, if anybody who's watching and heard the discussion about grass planting, grass seed will be planted once we get out of winter, and once it quits raining and it isn't, it's able to be seeded. So that will happen. All right, unfinished business. We have ordinance 2018-02-LNR, amending section 505 of the Village of Green Hills codified ordinances to include restrictions on tethering dogs. This ordinance was read for the first time at the February 27th council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Second, second reading of ordinance 2018-02-LNR, amending section 505 of the Village of Green Hills codified ordinance to include restrictions on tethering dogs. Whereas chapter 505 of the Green Hills codified ordinances currently regulates animals and fowl, and whereas the council has determined it is in the best interest of the Village of Green Hills to amend these regulations to include language that places restriction on the tethering of dogs, now therefore be it ordained by the Council of Village Green Hills. Section 1, that new language be incorporated in the chapter 505 of the Village of Green Hills codified ordinances as section 505.081 that reads as follows. A, no owner, keeper, or harbinger shall allow a dog to be tethered 1, for more than six hours in a 24-hour period; 2, between the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM; 3, when no owner, keeper, or harbinger of the dog is present on the premises; 4, in any area where there is an accumulation of feces or other waste, insect infestation, rodent infestation, foul odor, or an other in unsanitary or dangerous condition within the radius of the tether; 5, if there is a heat or a cold advisory or a severe weather warning. B, no owner, keeper, or harbinger of a dog shall use any of the following types of tethers for the dog. 1, a tether of less than 10 feet in length or less than four times the length of the dog's body from tip, tip of nose to base of tail, whichever is greater. 2, a tether the length which allows the dog to cross the property line on which it is tethered. 3, a tether that causes injury or pain to the, of the dog because of the material of which it is made, or because of the size or weight of the tether. Generally, a tether should not weigh more than one-eighth of the dog's body weight. C, no owner, keeper, or harbinger of a dog shall tether, tether the dog 1, by attaching the tether to the dog by means of a choke chain, pinch collar, or prong collar, as, as the collars are defined by the Humane Society of the United States. 2, by attaching the tether to a collar that is not properly fitted. 3, in an area likely to cause injury or pain to the dog because of entanglement. Or 4, in an area likely to cause injury or pain to the dog because of surrounding structures. Section 2, that all remaining provisions of chapter 505 shall remain in full force and effect. Section 3, that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this ordinance.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. Click call the roll.
Cabot?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Okay, ordinance 2018-02-LNR passes. Next ordinance is 2018-03-LNR, repealing chapter 745 of the Village of Green Hills codified ordinances regarding market sales, marketplace sales. And this ordinance was read for the first time at the February 27th meeting. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the second reading of ordinance 2018-03-LNR, repealing chapter 745 of the Village of Green Hills codified ordinances regarding marketplace sales. Whereas chapter 4, 745 of the Green Hills codified ordinances currently regulates marketplace sales, and whereas council has determined that for the efficient operation of the village administration, the market stand shall be treated in a similar fashion to other village facilities, such as picnic, shelter, gazebo, and whereas, in accordance with such determination, the regulations found in chapter 745 are no longer relevant or necessary and should be repealed. Now therefore be it ordained by the Council of Village Green Hills, Ohio, and majority members elected thereto concurring. Section 1, that chapter 745 of the Village of Green Hills codified ordinance is hereby repealed in its entirety. 2, that this ordinance shall be affected from and after the earliest period allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this ordinance.
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions?
Again, this, the clarification is that, that the, the market stand will be treated in similar fashion as we do with the gazebo, the picnic shelter, and so forth, with, with the appropriate fee, so.
Okay, click call the roll.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Cabot?
Aye.
Okay.
Was that, was that someone, someone calling in to vote as well?
I don't know. I thought I turned the phone. Spam calling. Okay, ordinance 2018-03-LNR passes. All right, the next, how did I lose my place here? Okay, the next is a resolution number 2018-08-F, resolution authorizing increases for certain village employees. And who's reading it?
I got it. Resolution number 2018-08-F, resolution authorizing increases for certain village employees. Whereas village employees perform well but are at the bottom of the pay scale for comparable positions in contrast to other communities, and whereas the village pay scale has not been updated for many years, and there were some years where increases were not given, both of which have caused salary rates to fall further behind. And whereas the expense to the village to hire and train new employees is, is significant, and it would be more cost-effective to retain our existing employees, therefore be resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, State of Ohio, that section 1, the village's hourly employees shall receive a step increase effective April 9, 2018. Section 2, those employees who have reached the top, their top step, shall be compensated as follows. Officer Patton, $25.92 per hour. Corporal Johnston, $24.50 per hour. T. Hendricks, $19.94 per hour. S. Fails, $19.38 per hour. Section 3, that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its adoption. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Clerk call the roll.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Cavode?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Okay, resolution twenty-eighteen dash oh-eight dash F passes. Okay, the next resolution, twenty-eighteen dash oh-nine dash F, resolution transferring funds from the general fund to the pool fund.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution twenty-eighteen zero nine F, resolution transferring funds from general fund to the pool fund, whereas certain funds need support from general fund transfers in order to maintain operations, and whereas appropriations have been passed by council for the purpose of supporting certain funds, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, that section one, that the following transfer of funds be made from previously appropriated monies from general fund one thousand to swimming pool two-nine zero-nine, amount sixty thousand dollars. Section two, this resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after the earliest date allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the passage of this resolution.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion, comments?
Just the budgeted money that we need to get the.
The pool.
Right, for the season. To sign it, it's not gonna be winter forever.
Right, yes, right. And if I'm not mistaken, to clear up another, that the pool cover was, has, was worn out and had, had torn, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, well, that's what Mike was telling us.
Okay. It was, it's reason for the removal, so.
Yeah, but we remove it about this time, and to start cleaning out the, the gun from the end of the season. All right, it's moved and seconded. Clerk call the roll.
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Cavode?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Okay, resolution twenty-eighteen dash oh-nine dash, dash F passes. Do we, since the attorney isn't here, I'll ask the next best person that knows all these things. Would it be, to save time, to show council support for the levy for the library, to pass a motion to that effect?
Yes, you would need to amend the agenda to add that as a business item, and then you would need to actually do the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend the agenda for this evening to add discussion and possible adoption of a resolution showing support for the.
Second.
Okay, motion. Not a resolution.
Oh, oh, motion.
Yeah, since we take some time to write up a resolution.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Call the roll.
Yes. Billy?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Cavode?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Somebody wanna whip up a motion that, because I think we all support keeping the library and supporting their one mil levy?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we publicly endorse issue three, Hamilton County Library levy of one, one mil, and its passage on May sixth.
Second.
And do we need a roll call or just a voice vote?
Voice vote.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes, and then can you send something of that nature to the library?
We will do so, and I will note on that the motion was included, so they need to check through the minutes, the draft.
Okay, okay.
And not to the library, but to the?
The web.
The separate.
Yes, right, yes, whoever that is.
Yeah, the separate group.
Vote for sensilibrary.com.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, calendar, and I would, I'd like to suggest starting, changing the starting time for the work session from seven o'clock to maybe seven forty-five, since the school district's giving a presentation at, starting at six to seven thirty, on the new middle school in town. And in case people wanna go to that, stay till seven thirty. Yeah, I was planning to go, but leave early, but it would be nice if we didn't.
Yeah, that'd be great. We're fine.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, just for this one time. Do we need to vote on that, or is that my prerogative?
I, I think.
It'll be posted, it'll be, be out there.
Okay, yeah, so we'll start at seven forty-five, next, the tenth.
It might be also, it might be also a good idea to let, alert to the Green Hills Journal because they always put their times there, and it will be coming out prior to the work session. So, some kind of a wording that only at this time.
Well, have the chief, have David get in touch with the Journal.
Okay. I've updated my calendar.
Okay, all right. And anything else on our calendar? We have the Easter egg hunt at two o'clock, is that what time? Sunday?
Sunday, April first.
April first.
Snowfooling.
I, I failed to mention the tendatively laws and rules on the twen, Monday, the twenty-third at nine AM.
And community development, April fifth at five fifteen.
I'm wildly excited to say, starting Wednesday, May thirtieth, for about ten or twelve Wednesdays in a row at seven o'clock, it will be concert on the top. And just so citizens know that these are not funded by tax dollars, they're funded by the generosity of the community, so if you feel like generously supporting these, it's done with the, through the CIC, and there's probably information in the office if someone wants to make a donation.
Yeah, I think, if not.
Go see Jim at the first one.
And your donations are tax deductible.
Also, would like to note that a lot of businesses, also, Alois, Alzheimer's Center has supported it, and so it's businesses as well as.
Yes, yes.
And Jim, Jim Miller continues to do a great job.
And if you know anybody wants to get married, I marry them and make the marriage fee a tax-deductible donation to the concerts, too. Anything to raise money for those people.
And Arbor Day is the twenty-seventh, was that, was that the right date?
Yes.
And I'm, I'm trying not to brag, but I've purchased my oak tree.
So did I.
In, in, in memory of Cincinnati Police, former Cincinnati Police Officer, departed good friend of mine, Elliot Greens, so I'm, I'm happy to, to do that, but I challenge the rest of you, buy a tree.
Buy a tree, that's going to be one deliver for the Arbor Day also, in the name of my dead husband, so. And I also would like to remind everybody on the twenty-seventh of April, it's going to appear in the paper as well, we're going to have a spaghetti dinner at the American Legion, so please come and support the Legionnaires and the auxiliary chapter there, that would be great if you can. If you can carry out, you can eat there, and that will be from six to eight. Please communicate with anybody in the Legion, get ahold of me, I can help you out to, and buy, head the tickets if you want to have a pre-sale purchase, so please come and support this very worthy cause for veterans. Thank you.
Safety Committee will meet April twenty-fourth at five, five fifteen prior to our April meeting, and does anyone know about the golf course?
Should open April first.
If it's not snow covered.
Yeah, it always opened around spring break, I just.
What was the date?
April first, that we think the golf course should open, weather-dependent.
Okay, but you're meeting.
Oh, four twenty-four, the same day as our April council meeting.
May I ask one more question? May I have the notes from Yvonne's report?
Yes.
Okay, nothing else, we're adjourned.